House Speaker Yarner, House Speaker Rodriguez, House Speaker Real Sinema, Congressman Hattie, so all present, and we'll establish our forum for our meeting. Please rise to the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
This time, no one signed up for a public comment. We'll move to be mayor and council reports, presentations, and declarations. Move on to the consent agenda. There are any consent items moving on to new business. One discussing considering confirmation of Ryan Mallwitz, their police officer for the Goddave Police Department.
Alright, council, this is Ryan Mallwitz. He comes from Willow Park. He has eight years' experience. He's advanced peace officer, advanced T-hole to mount telecommunicator license, advanced roadside impaired driver enforcement. He's a basic instructor, a field training officer, acts on pager instructor, a certified in talks operator. He brings a lot of experience. We recommend that you hire him. He does have an associate's degree.
What brings you to Goddave, sir?
I want to be part of a growing community. I was at Willow Park when they were a smaller city. I enjoyed my time there. When I come out here, I want to be part of the growing community out here. The Goddaves get bigger, and I want to tell the residents and be part of the growth.
Are you moving out here?
It is possibly, yes, sir. Sure is expensive. I believe that, yes, sir.
Make the motion to hire and confirm Officer Ryan Mallwitz as a police officer for the Goddave Police Department.
I'll second.
I got a motion. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed as you announced. Number two, discuss and consider permitting or just of Motorola ATX 8000 radios to the police department to the amount of $119,000.
Alright, council, we already approved this. We're going to do a five-year plan. With going without paying it right, we save $21,000.44 instead of going over five years of interest. So the actual payment will be $98,619.90 instead of after five years paying an additional $21,000. After talking to Mr. Van Foote, said it's going to be out of the general funds to pay what we already had in budget to make the difference. And we recommend doing this, saving the city about $21,000.
This is a contract we already approved?
Last one. It hasn't gone. This is the last little part, whether we do the five-year plan or we go ahead and do the out-pay rate. That's the last little bill we send to them. If we do the out-pay rate, then we'll change it to the out-pay rate. If not, we'll do the five-year plan.
What if we do it with the old equipment?
The old equipment will still stay here. Unfortunately, the $7,000s are obsolete. They don't make parts for them. They stopped making parts. So basically, we'll keep them as assets. If needed, we'll find a department that's really needing and come to y'all to present it, to sell it out to them if that's what they want to do.
What part do you replace as batteries, basically?
Right now, it's batteries, but we're talking internals. If they have to be replaced, we have to literally go hunt for someone to try and replace these. But as Motorola stated, those are completely obsolete. They said they will not fix them. You're going to have to find someone that has some type of parts for them. So most likely, they have used parts from other Motoros, and they would have to try and phone these and be prepared. With the ATX 8,000s, they do fix them. They have parts. They're still brand-new. At a ten-year plan, they're probably a year, two, or three. So they still at least have a seven-year, what they call seven-year shelf life still. So they'll start probably ATX 9,000, probably in about ten years.
I make motion, we purchase the Motorola ATX 8,000 radios with the full process.
I'll second that. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So the way the agenda is written, it's for $119,660 freedom. We're actually going to be driving check for $98,619.90. It's going to be scheduled to be on page 110 of that paper. Just for clarification. And $119 is including the $21,000 in interest.
The $21,000 is not used for...
Yeah, we will save the city $21,000 because we just outlined.
No further discussions, Scott.
Aye.
Aye.
I have a motion passed as you announced.
Thank you.
Three, discuss and consider adoption of Resolution Number R-11-2023-01, Resolution by the City of Goddave, Texas, permitting passing of votes in the 2024-2025 election of the board of directors for the Central President District of Johnson County, Texas. Arguing the pass is here. So on October 3rd, we nominated Paul Jones, a legal companion of John Wood. We need a total of 834 votes out of the county. There's like 5,000 votes on that. Five votes per 1,000. Amy and John Wood have already got enough votes to take their seats, so I do not recommend using any hard little cast for those.
Myself, I will take our pro votes and put six on Duane Golding and six on Paul Jones. So people, thank us and talk to us with a reform of the property taxes in the county. I think that'd be good. I would like to do that with the votes. Yeah, but these two weren't. They weren't good votes. I think, yeah, that's all that. Left my recommendation. I didn't make that regulation. I have more discussion on it. I make a recommendation that we pass six votes for Duane Golding. We vote for we pass six votes for Paul Jones to be here of our twelve votes we're allowing.
I have a motion for six votes for Paul Jones, six for Amy.
Yes.
I'll second that. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussions, Scott.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed as you announced. For discussion and consider approval and adoption of ordinance 11-2023-100, and ordinance in section 1,21, approval of legal documents. In chapter 32, officers and employees of Goddave Police Department set forth the responsibilities and duties of the mayor, providing a cumulative clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
None of these things that we are putting here is the duties to take away from what is required by law? Correct? None of these are to take away anything that we have on our books at this time? The ordinance and the statutes?
That's right. So everything that's allowed by law is reserved. And as Chapter 22, what it does is it delineates any kind of gray area that there might have been. So first, maybe you might have, if you look at the ordinance, resolutions, ordinances, conveyance of property, these are all traditional documents that Mary's on, the expenditure authority, that's something that you already have ordinance that you are addressing that with the city administration.
But basically, we're not taking any power away from the mayor that he already has. We're just saying the mayor cannot, whoever the mayor might be, cannot say, oh, this is what that means. No, it means what is the state and power order. You cannot decide, I'm the CEO, I can hire five or eleven.
Right. You are stuck with state law.
Yeah, corporate. Make motion to approve out of ordinance entirety.
I'll second that. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussions, Scott.
Aye.
Aye. I have a motion passed as you announced. Five, discussion and consider approval and adoption of ordinance 11-2023-100, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Goddave, section 32,007, City Administrator, Chapter 32, Officers and Employees of Goddave Police Department. You raise the expenditure authority of the City Administrator, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances, providing severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Angela, how will reporting of this go?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
How will reporting go?
Reporting to the council on expenditures?
Yeah, it's got to be like this.
Probably, yes. And anything that is, if the local government codes is anything over $50,902, you're in lanes, but...
It might go to $49,999.
Yes, $49,999 and 99. I've just made it a habit to bring a lot of contracts to the council, just so they're aware of what I'm always doing in my past life. I just felt better about doing it that way. I'm not talking about very small amounts for the area.
True.
I'm talking about major contracts, you know? And so that would be coming to the council anyway. So it just, it frees up logging this agenda down for every little thing. And I think the most important thing for coming to you, and we're following and cursing your procedure this time, and that would be coming to you, well, it's also in the pack to start talking about and not going to purchasing your policy for this service, I mean, for the employees here. So it'll all go hand in hand.
I'm comfortable with the $50,000. I do agree that $1,000 is not enough. Decided to come to us, six, seven, ten, fifteen thousand, or ours, we know what's happening in the city, how the people watching and coming to our meeting know what's happening. I think it brings more to the council. It brings more to the information we put out there, other than saying we signed this contract for $25,000 to firm a, I was a habit in here. I can understand that we have hammered the buying power here for the last while because of our limits and not knowing where we're at and who. Myself, I'm not comfortable with $50,000. I want the city, the council to talk about these over 10,000, over 20,000 dollars that we ever agreed to. I don't want to agree to it till we talk about it. But as this is real, I tell you. I don't consider that we usually talk about coming, but not costing somebody dollars. So... Yeah, that's the thing, you know, you get to a point where it's, I mean, how far do you micromanage to be wanting, I guess? I understand. I just think there's a limit to where, there's a point there that Angela can take off and take, or take here, and there's also a point that they need to come to us and we make the, not just other, but the city council itself is involved with it and makes that decision on how much money to spend.
And the law allows you the $50,999, and only we, not the department heads, if only we. So I'm comfortable with that. And we've put you in charge of the fire station for a reason, because that trust needs to be, and the micromanaging needs to stop. So I think that my trust given to you, so I agree with this. I mean, we can set it where, when they have to, not where it's, but where it takes quotes, free quotes, you know, P.O., and we can have a set of that, you know, it's like...
Well, I've seen your P.O.
It's in here already.
I'll send the next item. Did you read over that, Roger? Yeah, I read it. I just, at some point in time, this town needs bigger. This would be great, that amount. But at this point in time, I just want more discussion. When we spend, I'd say $20,000, over $20,000, we have a discussion. And when we get input and people know what's going on, other than saying I just spent this money, it'll be needed for this period, I can see. Not just, I just want, this seems more open, and we're more involved, which is what we need to do.
And you can set it where the requisitions are required for purchases, and that's $15,000, you know, so you can set it like $15,000 where we have to have requisitions on that. And then from there, then I can, we're working that to you, anything, when it starts at $15,000 and about.
Something like that, at this time.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that there.
So what you're saying is, this is, can be, what it doesn't ask is, then in the purchasing requirements, we set the requisition.
I'll just do, yeah, my purchasing policy will just make a little change on there. And I'll make enough to...
That work, you mean?
I hope I understand, so.
If we could, we could approve this as it is, but on the purchasing procedures, which we're going to look at next, we can put a limit on the requisitions. I think this is what you're saying.
Right.
I mean, don't want to put worse.
No, that's true. We can, because it says requisition for purchases of $15,000 to $49,999. We're part of the department, very dear hands, that you can straight up approve through a written quote, permanent, there isn't a PMP issue. You can set it right there and then we can bring it from there on.
The city administrator and city council at that point, not just those two, the city council. I can do that. I just, I won't, I won't, had the city council give the, or figure out at this time.
So just to clarify for y'all, if you're looking at that last sentence there in section one, says the city administrator may issue such rules governing procedures for purchasing within the administrative organization or whatever you want, just like these. And so that's the difference is that, what you'll, will come back later to you, is a purchasing policy that you can approve, and so in that purchasing policy, you can set all those down.
Okay.
That's...
So this is just basically staying the law, the law is up to $50,000, and there we go. Next time, we have a discussion. Yes. How are we going to break it down? I'm kind of...
So with the $1,000, would that be right for the next week?
Paul, I see a little bit. I'm standing.
Make motion to approve out of five. You think you're ready?
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed as you announced. Item six, discuss and consider approval and adoption of Resolution R-11-2023-02, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Goddave, Texas, authorizing and designating certain city officers as signatories of the City of Goddave for making and providing services, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Should be numbered to ask for a decision on that. Can we do it on six?
I was about to say, maybe we can make a decision on some six.
Move it so fast, it's blowing my mind.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a piece of y'all are going to make a decision. You asking a pool to cross section, stuffy all?
On the word of advice, you would have been on the executive session under...
Under legal advice. So that's that first section there on your agenda. Still any sections?
It is 1851. At this time, the W. City Council will stop its open session and convene into executive session for item six, number 551.071. The Goddave City Council adjourned at executive session in 1933 and make the meeting of open session in 1943. Item six, discuss and consider approval and adoption of Resolution R-11-2023-02, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Goddave, Texas, authorizing and designating certain city officers as signatories of the City of Goddave for making and providing services, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Make motion to approve item six in its entirety under the following amendment, that the resolution takes effect on November 17, 2003.
I'll second that motion.
You have a motion? I'll second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed as you announced. Discussion on item is department, no favorite courts. All having a question on this.
I'm here.
On the revenue expense report, they have that, they have that numbers. It's only on fill-off to review first. And would y'all like to discuss the proposed purchasing policy in the speakers?
I just provided that, so it's something that you can start looking at with the government and on bringing policies or procedures into the city on purchasing and procurement of products and items. We can talk about that more in the work session and make some changes, like we talked about earlier, and do those look at later time. But I want these people to look at it and see what I'm proposing that we start with. Unless you have any questions, if you have time to look at it, if we wanted to do that in a work session, I think that would give us a chance to go over those questions about this. Just want to get us started to talk about that. The next thing that'll probably come to you is going to be a personnel name, working on that case, so that we can get something established with that, and a customer response, you know, that will relate to your utility department. And the responsibilities of the city for the customer and customer responsibility on their part, providing us information so that we can be more efficient in the utility department. So there are going to be about three policies that we can... We just start with this one?
You got a microphone over there?
I should have. So those are just some of those, those are just some policies that I'm proposing in the future. I think there'll be direct tools and resources for our employees, for the citizens, for the council in the future. Well, if you have any questions, we'll just fish that off until we end, but I just want to do this. Well, do you have any questions? We'll just push that off and so we end, but I just wanted to just talk about that.
Here we can add that to the session.
I'll, um, hold y'all later after we, and now we've got, we didn't come out on the sixteenth, and then, um.
So this, so.
That would be under items of community interest. So under items of community interest, introduced, we have a special meeting on the sixteenth. And we will, uh, canvassing the votes of that time. And then we have this discussion amongst them on.
Future agenda items, what I'm hearing is inspirational. So no decisions or discussion.
Anything else on the session items, community interest items, centers, like, if we have our, if we have a parade, do you have any other things that we all know that are coming out to the cities included on?
There's a Christmas party, the staff Christmas party, and councilman's Christmas party on the eighth.
Yes.
On the eighth. I'll send that information to y'all.
Is there a football?
There's a football.
They got a football? Good Brian got one.
Uh, so on the twenty-sixth, uh, no record. The, at Delmar Day, they have the, the sirens and stuff, where police department and car department would be at. Uh, they're under, they have food trucks, uh, also, uh, can you think of one of that?
Vendors.
Yeah, just a bunch of different vendors, everything like that. They've asked us to, if we can come out so kids can play on vehicles and see the lights and the pretty stuff. So that's where we're gonna be at also. So.
One of the three.
Yeah, one of the three. It's gonna be at Delmar Day.
Is this for purchase, monitor, appreciation?
Uh, no, I think it's a mix of just about everything. Vendors and just, they just asked if we can come out. And, uh, just kinda show off all the pretty stuff on the end. Get more excitement.
If there's no other items of community interest, we will.
Um, on, we, we talked about for this week, because it's Thanksgiving week, what did we decide with that?
I don't think there's any discussion, or decisions we made tonight on that.
If not, that is in the plan.
Should we be on the table?
Yeah, this one's Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, I think, I think what we could have is. The city administrator told you on whether or not you wanna have a meeting and then notice if there is or is not.
Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn at nineteen fifty-one. Got a motion in the second and third discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Aye.
Aye.